Second, 2023 Planning Commission to Order at 6:00. Madam Clerk, will you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Glenn is absent tonight. Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Shane?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Scoggins?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Just like to welcome Commissioner Shane. Welcome to the commission.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Any additions or changes to the agenda? Any objections to approving the agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the agenda is approved. Would Commissioner Allen lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Includes the minutes, the regular minute, mating minutes from September 18th, 2023, and introduction for public hearing quasi judicial matters. Resolution 23-36, a conditional use permit for the construction of four meteorological towers located within Township 16 North, Range 9 West, Sections 8 and 19, Township 16 North, Range 10 West, Section 25, and Township 17 North, Range 9 West, Section 23, Seward Meridian. Public hearing scheduled for October 16th, 2023. Applicant Andrew McDonald of Little Susitna Wind LLC, Staff Peggy Horton, Planner 2. Okay, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Okay, there are no committee reports, agency or staff reports, land use classifications. So we are now on to audience participation. At this time, members of the audience may speak regarding any topic that is not on the agenda for public hearing. If anyone is on the phone who wishes to speak, please press star 3. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak now? Okay, is there anyone on the phone? All right. One last chance. Okay, any objection to closing audience participation? Hearing and seeing none, audience participation is closed. Moving to public hearing quasi judicial matters. Resolution 23-32, a conditional use permit in accordance with MSB 17.60, conditional uses for the operation of a marijuana cultivation facility known as Green Go, located at 2323 East Palmer Wasilla Highway, tax ID number 17 November 01 Whiskey 11 Alpha 020, within Township 17 North, Range 1 West, Section 11 Seward Meridian. Applicant Sandra Milhouse for Green Go LLC. Staff is Rick Benedict, Planner 2. Before we begin, for the planning commissioners, do you or any member or your immediate family have a substantial financial interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of this decision? Okay, all have said no. Have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellant, other interested parties, or members of the public concerning this application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision? All have indicated no. Are you able to be impartial in this decision? All have indicated yes. Okay. Mr. Benedict, would you like to proceed?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rick Benedict. I'm a Planner 2 with Development Services Division. I'd like to provide the commission with an overview of the proposed conditional use permit this evening. The staff report for PC Resolution 23-32 can be found starting on page 191 of your packets. Please also reference your handouts, which contain agency comments and updated application information. Sandra Milhouse, on behalf of Green Go, has submitted a conditional use permit application for the operation of a marijuana cultivation facility. The proposed use will occupy a new structure approximately 7,800 square feet in size and be accessible from East Palmer Wasilla Highway. The subject property is approximately 15.2 acres in size and is located northwest of East Palmer Wasilla Highway and southwest of East Myrtle Avenue, with a lake frontage on the southern shores of Wasilla Lake. The subject property has two existing commercial uses, a donut shop and a marijuana retail shop, both located southwest of the proposed use. MSB 17.03 directs public notice for conditional use permits. Thirty-nine notices were mailed on July 25th, 2023 to property owners within 600 feet of the subject property. One negative response was received from the public as a result of the mailing and is included in the staff report that expressed concerns over future road projects. The frontiersman published the public hearing notice in the July 26th, 2023 edition. Staff posted the application material on the borough's website on July 21st, 2023. Staff emailed the public notice, application material, and a request for comments to internal and external agencies on July 21st, 2023. On September 20th, 2023, the Alaska State Department of Environmental Conservation, Division of Environmental Health responded recommending the applicant adhere to recommendations for general project activities near a public water system source. MSB 17.60.160A requires a wastewater disposal plan that demonstrates any wastewater associated with the cultivation facility be disposed of in compliance with state, Alaska State Department of Environmental Conservation requirements. The proposed use has an onsite septic system and holding tank. Per ADEC, a review of this septic system is required by a professional engineer licensed within the state of Alaska to determine if the system can accept non-domestic wastewater. Staff recommends a condition of approval that before conducting operations under this permit, the applicant shall provide documentation by an engineer licensed within the state of Alaska indicating the onsite septic system can accept non-domestic wastewater or provide information demonstrating wastewater will be kept in storage tanks and that a third-party contractor will remove and dispose of the wastewater at a legally permitted wastewater facility. MSB 17.60.100B2 requires that granting the conditional use permit will not be harmful to the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare. On August 7th, 2023, a response to the notice was received from the state of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities recommending the applicant complete the driveway permitting process for access to East Palmer Wasilla Highway. Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities commented stating that any previously issued access permits become invalid once a property undergoes a platting action and must be reissued. In June 2023, a plat was recorded involving the subject property that combined three parcels known as Track A Milhouse Estates. Staff recommends a condition of approval that before conducting operations of a standard cultivation facility under this permit, the applicant shall apply for a driveway permit with the Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities for access to East Palmer Wasilla Highway and provide a copy to the borough. Staff also recommends a condition that the applicant obtain a final driveway permit by September 30th, 2024, and provide a copy of the permit to the borough. On September 19th, 2023, borough staff conducted a site visit of the subject parcel and observed a non-permitted driveway on the southeast portion providing access to North Bet Street. North Bet Street is borough-owned and is classified as residential. There were no effective means to prevent access to the proposed use from North Bet Street. The application materials did not propose this location as an access point to the subject property or proposed use. Staff recommends a condition of approval that before conducting operations under this permit, the applicant shall permanently block off or remove the unpermitted driveway at the southeast portion of the subject property or apply for and obtain a final commercial driveway permit from the Matsu Borough Permitting Center for access to North Bet Street. On July 10th, 2023, the applicant submitted a certified site plan indicating that a privacy fence is installed along the southern portion of the subject parcel adjacent to East Palmer Wasilla Highway, a portion of which exists within the Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities right-of-way. Staff recommends a condition of approval to be completed by September 30th, 2024, that the applicant shall remove a portion of that privacy fence located within the A dot right-of-way and notify the borough when completed, or the applicant shall obtain an encroachment permit from A dot right-of-way for the privacy fence and provide a copy to the borough. In light of the application material, staff site visit and comments received from the public and outside agencies, borough staff recommends approval with conditions of a conditional use permit to operate a marijuana cultivation facility located at 2323 East Palmer Wasilla Highway. The draft resolution containing these recommendations can be found in the public, in the packet, starting on page 402. Ma'am, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Would the applicant Sandra Milhouse like to add anything? Please, please turn on the mic first. Okay.
I had gone through the process of building the building with a different contractor. I got almost what I thought was 90% done and found out that 35% of the building had been done wrong. So I had to backtrack. I had to let him go and hire somebody else. During that process, I hadn't realized that the DEC approval hadn't gone through and the septic had actually been put in August of 2022. So I was a little shocked last week when I found out that that actually hadn't happened. I hired Orion Construction, who's sitting back here behind me. He helped me through the process with the DEC at the end of the week last week. They asked us to plug up the drains that, I'm not sure what the correct wording is, but I provided that to Tanya Bear at the DEC on Saturday. And prior to that on Friday, she had written a note to us saying that she does not object, has no objection to the MSB Planning Commission for our facility. So I do have the DEC approval done. I just wasn't able to get the paperwork today because it takes a little while to get things moving. To address the driveways, the driveway permit for Bets went in last summer when we put the driveway in. The paperwork went in sometime in the middle of winter. So that is actually sitting at the borough waiting for approval. So that one was done. I have another CUP on the property for the Can It Get Happy facility. And I didn't realize that the fence in the driveway had needed something after they had changed the road and I did the plating. So I contacted the DOT and the process. It's in process for me to get the exception for the fence because it is a safety issue. It's really close to the building and both driveway permits I've requested to get a permit for both of them. So the things that, the conditional things, I just wanted to let you know I have started it. It's already in process. And as soon as I get the approval, I'll send it to you. Is that all of them? Okay. That was it.
And I'm sorry, Commissioners, I did not give you the opportunity to ask staff any questions. So we'll start there. If there's any questions for staff? Okay, is there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 23-32. If there's anyone on the phone who wish to speak, please press star 1. I'm sorry, star 3. Thank you, Caleb. Nobody? Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to participate? Okay. Hearing and seeing no persons to be heard. Is there any objection to closing the public hearing? All right, public hearing is closed. Okay, Mr. Benedict, did you have anything else that you would like to add?
No ma'am, I do not.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion for Resolution 23-32.
I'll move for consideration Resolution 23-32. This is Commissioner Allen.
I'll second that. Okay, Commissioner Allen made the motion for the resolution and Commissioner McCabe seconded. So is there any discussion? Okay. Is there any objection? No objection. Since there's no objection, the Resolution 23-32 passes.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Okay, we're moving on to public hearing for legislative matters. Resolution 23-34, a resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance adopting MSB 2.29.110 Procedures for Appeals, Requests for Correction, or Requests for Exemption under MSB 17.11, Sex Offenders, and Amending MSB 17.11.080 Appeals to reference the appeal process for MSB 2.29.110. Staff Alex Strawn, Planning and Land Use Director. Alex?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, Alex Strawn, Planning Director for the Matsu Borough. So this ordinance was prepared by the Clerk's Office at the borough in, because back in July, we, the Assembly adopted legislation that essentially created exclusion zones for sex offenders, saying that they can't live within a certain distance of a school or park or playground. And when that was adopted, the clerks realized that there were some things that could be sort of appealed in that language, which if somebody says, hey, you got the wrong guy. I'm not a sex offender. Or if, for some reason, they feel that they should not be subject to this exclusion zones, that they can sort of host a type of appeal that would go to a hearing officer. The hearing officer that we have here has several different types of appeals that are specific, the procedures for which are specifically addressed within code. But this particular type of appeal is not specifically addressed within code. So instead of having this like sort of nebulous requirement out there where they're sort of guessing on how the timeframes work, this creates a very specific process for them to go through when they go through that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Alex? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Resolution 23-34. If there is anyone on the phone who wishes to speak, please press star 3. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to participate? Okay. Hearing and seeing no other persons to be heard. Is there any objection to closing the public hearing? No objections, public hearing is closed. Okay. Did you have anything else that you'd like to add? Okay. I will now entertain a motion for Resolution 23-34. I'll move Resolution 23-34.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner McCabe and seconded by Commissioner Scoggins. Is there any discussion? Okay. Is there any objection? All right, hearing and seeing none. Resolution 23-34 passes. Moving to Resolution 23-35, a resolution of the, did I miss something?
I guess, but I believe the time has passed on it and that's okay.
I'm sorry.
Nope, that's my fault.
Get my attention. I'm sorry, I apologize. A lot of times, if you just turn your mic on and I see it's lit, I'll catch it.
Copy that.
Okay, moving to Resolution 23-35, a resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance amending MSB Title 15 relating to the Planning Commission. Staff Alex Strawn, Planning and Land Use Director. Alex?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This ordinance was actually prepared by our attorney's office. So we do have the author here at the dais if we have, if we get into the weeds here. But essentially, the Title 15 that relates to the Planning Commission has been changed a few times throughout the years. And it's a little bit wonky and a little bit antiquated. It, our attorneys have identified, though, that there is a state statute that requires that we have representation from the cities that are either home class or a home rule or first-class cities. And they really need to be selected by the city itself. And so what this does is it sort of fixes Title 15. This would bring our seven-person planning commission to a nine-person planning commission. So it would get a little bit more cozy up here. But essentially, I think the way it would work, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the cities would actually select a person that would go sit on the planning commission. So.
Mostly.
Mostly?
So the cities will submit names to the mayor. So the mayor is still doing an appointment, but she's selecting from the names that have been submitted by each of the cities.
Okay, fair, yeah, that's right. It still has to be brought forward on the vacancy report by the mayor and then actually ultimately approved by the Assembly. But the cities would select what names they put forward to the mayor. So it would change what we would have for a quorum or for approving from four members to five members because that'd be the majority of the nine-member board. And then in sort of getting into Title 15, the attorneys did a good job of looking at all the provisions that are a little out of whack and putting them back into line, adding, you know, there was no provision in there that says that the planning commission takes on conditional use permits. Right, so that was added. There was some sort of grammatical errors. It has the borough manager and the planning director as ex officio planning commissioners, where I don't even, that's really not our role up here as, you know, that's not my role sitting here. I'm really acting as a representative for the planning department, not as a member of the board. So a lot of cleanup language, which I think will make it a more accurate and legal section of code. So, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Alex?
Through the chair. Commissioner Fernandez here. Just curious, are there any provisions inside of the resolution that would award representatives from city appointments any more rights or duties, obligations, anything thereof compared to those of us who represent borough districts? Just curious if there's any differences.
So I think the answer is no. They would just be another planning commissioner like anybody else. Yep. And although our, you know, we have historically, we have seven Assembly districts and we have seven planning commissioners, each from a district. But it didn't have to be that way. It, you know, if you're from a certain district, you're not necessarily representing that district. You're really representing the entire borough, which is a little bit different than the way the Assembly's set up. But, so we wanted to maintain that, that because typically Assembly members put the name forward of a person in their district that they would like to see on the board. But we also wanted both cities to have representation. So brought it up to nine. Power to the people.
This is Commissioner Allen. Is there a process prescribed by which the cities put forth the names?
I don't, there's nothing in the code that would require that they do it in a certain way. I think they would just follow their own rules of proceeding and everything like that and figure out how they're going to put those names forward.
So the city mayor could come up with three names, whatever they're.
I was just going to say, in doing the research on all this, the cities actually already have it in their code to provide these names and to go forward on how it's done. So that is determined by the cities as to how they present those names. And they actually, I know for a fact, City of Wasilla has it in their code, written strictly as how the state statute states.
So that would likely come up at a city council meeting?
Correct, it's the city council that submits the names to the mayor.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are the mayor of the borough and the Assembly obligated to pick from the list that is supplied by the city?
Go ahead, Denise. As you're staring at me. So the mayor is never obligated to pick from the names that are provided to her. What would happen then is they'd have, she would go back to the city council and request that they submit additional names, should she not choose one of the names that are on the list of what was submitted. So it could take, add to a time process of getting someone appointed. But the mayor is obligated to choose someone from the list, which list it is, that would be up to the mayor. It's been a long time since there has been names submitted that were then not chosen and went through a whole process.
Okay, any other questions?
Through the chair, sorry, Commissioner Shane. So I guess it sounds like you already kind of answered my question. But so this obviously affects my district. And I'm just kind of curious, is there anywhere that there'd be conflict in that with representing the same place that they are? Because we're not, does that kind of make sense?
So again, as a planning commissioner, you're really not actually representing a district. That's an important clarification. You're representing the entire borough. We just have it set up that we have members from each district on the commission, but you're not representing that district.
Okay.
There shouldn't be a conflict.
That, Commissioner McCabe, that does bring up an interesting point, though. If you have two people that are from the same area, could they potentially weight the commission?
So is the question whether the mayor could waive the boundaries or?
No, having two commissioners from the same area, could they potentially weight decisions?
I don't.
I mean, there's only two of them.
I don't think there would be a need.
The role of these new commissioners is to represent the entire borough as well. Every single person that sits up here is to represent the borough. They're not, you're not representing District Six, you're not representing District Five. If you read Title 15, it's just that the commissioners are apportioned based on population, and that apportionment tends to go based on districts. Districts can be two streets away from each other, so you can have people that are already living right by each other. So this is everybody as a planning commissioner, whether living in a city, living in a district, represents the borough as a whole.
And if you, Alex, Alex Strong. I don't know. But I mean, if, if there's a person from the City of Palmer sitting on the board, they're still going to see a conditional use permit application in the City of Talkeetno, and they're a long ways away. And there's, they're going to review legislation that affects the borough as a whole. I mean, so they're, yeah, they're not going to represent just the city.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Then I will now entertain a motion for Resolution 23-35.
Commissioner Fernandez here. I move to approve Resolution 23-35.
I'm sorry. We have to back up. We are going to open public hearing first, and then we'll come back to the motion. So I'm pulling the motion. Can I do that? Tabling?
Commissioner Fernandez here. I withdraw my.
Thank you.
Motion from the, from the floor for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we will now open public hearing on Resolution 23-35. If anyone's on the phone wishes to speak, please press star three. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay. And there is no audience. So I think we're safe. Hearing and seeing no persons to be heard. Is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, public and hearing is, public hearing is closed. Now, I would like to entertain a motion for Resolution 23-35.
Commissioner Fernandez here. I move to approve Resolution 23-35.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay. The motion was put forward by Commissioner Fernandez and seconded by Commissioner McCabe. Is there any discussion? Okay. Any objections? Hearing and seeing none, Resolution 23-35 passes. All right. We are flying through this today. I like it. I just turned my pages. Okay. We do not have any correspondence or information, unfinished business or new business, so we are on to commission business. Mr. Strong?
Yeah. So I'll just go down one by one. The first one is, as always, we have the list of upcoming agenda items in the, I think the rear of the packet that you have there. If you want to take a look at what's, what the future has in store and what items you shouldn't be talking with people about if they're quasi judicial. And then, you know, I'd answer any questions on that, but we need to get to Section B and nominate somebody for school site selection committee seat.
Through the chair. Commissioner Fernandez here. What is that?
That's a great question. I've got you. I got you on this one. Okay. So Alex Strong, Planning Director. So the, there's actually a section of code that talks about the school site selection committee. One of the things that the planning department does and is sort of facilitate this committee that when we have a need for a new school coming up, we'll be notified of that by the school district, and we will look, we'll go through a whole process to figure out where the most suitable location for a new school would be. We'd have like a search area, we'd look at all the borough parcels in that area, see if any of those work. We may have some engineering studies done and soil testing and things like that to see what, what may or may not work. We may have to look into private properties and then, but ultimately, that group would make a, a recommendation on where the next school site would be for construction of a new school. So they don't come up all that often, but we are one of the, I think probably the only place in the state that's still building new schools, so it could very well come up in the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Is there any of the, are any of the commissioners interested in serving on this? This would be a perfect time to raise your hand.
Through the chair. Commissioner Fernandez here. I am absolutely fascinated by this particular topic, and I would be honored to volunteer my name.
Excellent. Unless there's anyone else, I say you've got it.
Thank you.
We may maybe ask for objection.
I'm sorry. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none. It's done.
Okay. And then, Madam Chair. So Tuesday, October 10th is the Joint Planning Commission Assembly Meeting. We, I think very soon, if not already, the agenda will be posted, and we have a few different items we're going to talk about. Those are always fun, and we'll go over quite a few things. If there's, I think, it may not be too late, if you get very soon any topics that you'd like to discuss with the Assembly and planning staff to be on that, you can always submit those, and if we can't get on this one, we can always get on the next one as well. And then I'm hoping at some point we can talk about townships, ranges, and sections. We, I think that was never resolved at the last meeting. I was listening in on it, and it was, I didn't get to really participate in the discussion, but, so this was actually originally staff for Glash and a previous planning commissioners. Like, you know how much ink and time tongue-twisting you'd save if you just removed those things? And they don't provide any value. And I've, I've given it quite a bit of thought and tried to play devil's advocate and figure out why on earth we would need to keep township range and section for just advertising where a location of certain facilities are. If they, if we have an address, when we have a tax ID, it seems more than sufficient to actually notify the public of where that location is at. We also send out a map and everything like that. Certainly township range and section goes in the staff report, it goes in the permit, it goes in all the documentation associated with these things. So as far as historical record, I don't think that's a problem at all, but I think it actually, sometimes less is more, and I would, would really like to go forward not including those. I think it would actually better, better serve the public. So hoping to do that unless I hear objection from people.
Are you making a motion to do that?
I don't think we need a motion. I mean, this, this.
It's just a clarification.
This is just an internal staff thing, and I just want to make sure I'm not going to ruffle feathers if we go forward with that. No.
It doesn't appear that you are.
Okay. Very good. And since I'm on, since I'm talking, go ahead. Yeah.
So I, the only exception would be maybe if you're without, the borough's big, right? It's huge.
Yes.
Only a little bit. Not much goes on the big parts, so you still have to use it.
There are.
Remote areas.
There are certain circumstances, and we had an introduction on this agenda where there is no address and there's no tax ID, so we have to use township range and section. That's how.
It's easier for you, but otherwise, yeah, it makes sense to me anyway, but.
Yeah.
It's just, it's blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. Exactly.
Makes it easier for me, too, so I'm okay with that.
That's right. And then the other thing is, just, we also schedule an October 30th, kind of a work session type thing. It's a planning commissioner training. We have a really great opportunity. We, as part of a, a different project, we hired this consulting firm that, one thing that comes with it is this individual who has 30 years of experience doing planning commissioner training, and he's going to be in town and offered, hey, if you'd like, I would love to do my spiel to your planning commission. It's kind of what your role is as a planning commissioner, how it fits in with the comprehensive plan, and, you know, a lot of different things. I'm, I'm hoping that staff and commissioners will actually glean some knowledge and understanding with this presentation, so we're going to take advantage of that for the 30th. So, yep.
Looking forward to it.
Great.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go to the director and commissioner comments. So Alex, why don't you go ahead?
That was my spiel.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and welcome to the new commissioner, Commissioner Shane. Welcome.
All right. Commissioner Fernandez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I, inherent, I think in my role and just what I do for the, I've done for the last 13 years, the idea of learning more information about how a specific type of a committee would make a recommendation for a school site is, it really does get me excited. So I appreciate everyone humbly stepping down from that opportunity. And as far as township, north range, west, I'm a real estate broker. If I want to find you, I'm going to find you. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
Welcome, Commissioner Shane.
Commissioner Shane?
I really just want to say, happy to be here. Thank you to all of you for the warm welcome, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Excellent. Commissioner McCabe? Welcome, Commissioner Shane, and thank you, Commissioner Fernandez, for stepping up. Commissioner Scoggins?
I have no comments.
Okay. And I would also like to say thank you, Commissioner Fernandez, for doing that. It's been something that's come up a couple times, so it's good that we actually have a name on the list. And Commissioner Shane, welcome. I hope you see that we're all not perfect at this, and we are able to survive it, so you'll do fine. Good to have you on board. Okay. Unless there is anything else, and I don't hear or see anything else, then we will call the meeting adjourned at 6:41.